Great, thank you. Welcome everyone. It's Monday, January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. It's the time and place for the regularly scheduled city council meeting. Certify the meeting notes.
This meeting has been noticed in accordance with Idaho Code seven four dash two zero four.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Heller.
Present.
Councilmember Jorgensen here. Councilmember Jacobs. Councilmember Page.
Here.
Thank you. You join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Next item is changes to the agenda. There's none from staff. Okay. Before we move on to the consent agenda, I do want to acknowledge Chief Allen that this is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. Susanna has put a nice post on our Facebook, so if you get a chance to look at that. But we appreciate Chief, the work you and your men do to safeguard our city, our county, and our nation. Thank you. Next item is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would move to approve the consent agenda as recorded in the packet.
Second. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Here now the clerk color roll.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on staff reports. Those are in your packet. If you have questions you want to air now, you can, or feel free to contact the department heads if you haven't already. Move on to section G, G one. This is a third reading of ordinance ten thirty-five dash twenty-two. Mr. Waddams, would you brief us on this?
I would be happy to, Mayor. Mayor and members of the council, I have a memorandum in your packet. It starts on page sixty-eight. And I won't go through that in any detail because I know you have read the memo. One thing I just wanted to point out is on page seventy-one of your packet. I wanted to talk about this just briefly. So what this is, this is a rezone. This is the third reading for a rezone. The council previously adopted a written decision document in this case. So this is the third reading. I've been talking to the applicant and staff and the applicant had agreed to limit the use because this is a rezone with what is called a conditional rezone with a development agreement. In the development agreement, we've agreed to this limitation. First of all, the applicant agreed to a limitation that says any use shall not be a dedicated food truck lot. After talking to the mayor, we thought that would be appropriate. So again, he's agreed that any use shall not be a dedicated food truck lot. And the rest of the limit is the use is allowed pursuant to the conditional rezone shall be whatever's permitted or conditionally permitted in a C two. And it goes on to explain what that is. So I think both staff and the applicant have agreed to this limitation on the use with this rezone. So at this point in time, I'm going to recommend a third reading on the rezone and then a motion to adopt and publish. Thank you.
Okay, questions to staff? Applicant, did Mr. Waddam properly represent your position?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Did he properly represent your position?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Let the record reflect the applicant acknowledged what Mr. Waddams just indicated. So with that, council, if there are no questions of Mr. Waddams, the motion would be to read ordinance ten thirty-five twenty-two for the third time by title only.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move that, I move for a third reading of ordinance number ten thirty-five dash twenty-two by title only.
Second. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk color roll.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes.
Ordinance one three zero five dash two two and ordinance by the City of Garden City, a municipal corporation, providing for rezone of certain real property described herein from R three medium density residential to C two D eight general commercial classification with a development agreement, amending the zoning map of the City of Garden City to reflect said change, providing for severability, approving a summary of the ordinance, and providing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we adopt and publish ordinance number ten thirty-five dash twenty-two.
Got a motion and a second to adopt ordinance ten thirty-five dash twenty-two. Mr. Waddams, is the development agreement embedded in that motion or is it a separate motion?
It would be embedded in that because part of the ordinance is the development.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk color roll.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. You're quite welcome. Next item on the agenda, item G two. This is a public hearing item on S U B F Y two thousand and twenty-two dash zero 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 seven, quad six subdivision. Council, we have a number of items on the agenda tonight. I think I'll do this in one fell swoop. Is there anyone that needs to declare conflict on any of the items left on the agenda? Hey, let the record reflect no conflict declarations. Who's representing the applicant on quad six? Okay, if you would make your way up here to the podium, what we'll do, the applicant will present the application. Following that presentation, Ms. Thornborough will deliver the staff report. Following that, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone that wishes to testify regarding this application will have an opportunity to do so at that time. The applicant will have an opportunity for the final word. Any closing comments or rebuttal? We'll close the public hearing after that, and the council will make a decision. So with that, if you would, sir, let's welcome first of all, and if you would give us your name and address for the record.
Perfect. Jaden Schneider with Bronzebow. The address is four six three zero North Maple Grove Road. I am the applicant working on behalf of the developer.
Jenna, I had pulled this up. Would you help me with this? I do have the flash drive too. Yeah, she did send it. If it's not, then I can spot down one presentation. Perfect.
Okay, well, thank you for your time tonight. I'd like to start the meeting by just saying a special thank you to Hannah Veal and Jennifer, their help on this. Staff, city staff has been very cordial with helping us. There's been lots of reiterations, iterations and reiterations of this project, and we'll go through a few of those for this tonight, but basically quad six subdivision is of seven lot, seven lot townhome subdivision, or seven buildings with two common lots, so nine in total. It's on just under one half acre of land, four point four five, or four point five four acres in total. It's R three, which is medium density. The seven townhomes are broken up into two blocks on the southeast side of the site. Just for clarity, the site is rotated a little bit, so I like to refer to it just as the top of the site being off to the northwest side, the right side of the site as kind of the northeast, the southeast being the bottom of the site and the southwest side being adjacent to Adam Street. So most of the slides are laid out in an adder that is easy just to say left, right, top and bottom. So the two buildings that were put together right now is a fourplex building on the left side of the site, which is closer to Adam Street, and a threeplex building, which is going to be three individual townhomes on the right side of the site. Each of the townhomes are proposed as being on an individual lot, which allows for individual ownership and title of each building. So even though it's a fourplex and a threeplex, there's still individual townhomes which can be split up, sold or held individually as the developer seems fit there. The common lots are proposed as being owned and maintained by the quad six subdivision homeowners association. The existing site is currently is a manufactured home. The cross-access agreement is in place between the existing site and the site that's kind of off to the northeast of the site. Up here, this is Glad's Repair. It's an auto mechanic shop right there. Glad's Repair has been very cordial working with us. They've been a great neighbor and we hope to be a great neighbor working with them. As you can see from this view right here on the existing site map, there's a stretch of existing pavement that's kind of on the top side of the site, and that is protected by a sixteen-foot wide easement between Adam Street and Glad's Repair. It's for the benefit of this secondary lot. The lot itself, as we mentioned, is about half an acre, which means that Glad's Repair is just about the exact same. So in total, I'm, I'm assumption is that it used to be one full acre and then there was some sort of lot split that took place sometime in the past and involves this cross-access easement. The existing or the townhomes that we're proposing, let me see if I can pull this off to the side here. The townhomes that we're proposing have gone through a number of iterations, just as I had mentioned in regards to the facades and trying to add a little bit of character and more character through this. We took this through the design review committee and they had just requested that we put in a little extra work, try to add up a little bit more character each individual building. So what we have here is we have the elevations for the three units and the elevations for the four unit building. The threeplex building has a mixture of unit types. It's A and B. The smallest of these buildings goes from two thousand eighty-eight square feet and the largest being the unit type B, which is two thousand three hundred and twenty-three square feet for the livable space within each of the buildings. The unit A type on the threeplex has a three-bedroom, three-and-a-half-bath and two-car garage. Unit B has a four-bedroom, three-and-a-half-bath, two-car garage. For the fourplex, similar idea, unit A and unit B. Those units are split up between the smaller lots, which are a little bit more cramped on space and the exterior, just to add those extra areas. So that's where we're getting a little bit of that difference in total square footage. And then as part of the P U D, we're just trying to add a little bit of variety to the site to not just have three-bed, two-and-a-half-bath cookie cutter. We're trying to add a little bit more to what we can. We'll still maximize the potential of the site. So one of the updates that I wanted to speak to from the design review committee, on the left side of the screen, we can see the original unit one, which is the Adam Street elevation. So clicking back to this slide, this is that unit one lot right here. So originally what we had put together did not have a lot of special character to it, adjacent to Adam Street. So the design review committee asked us to put in a little bit more effort. And as you can see here on the right side of the screen, we've gone ahead and added some more character to it. We've added some stone facades. We've added some siding and ended up actually putting in a balcony with a little bit more windows and some more things that we want to put in there just to add something so that the side of the street that's along Adam Street or the side of the building that's along Adam Street has that character and has that ability to look good from the streetscape and have that entrance to the site looking attractive. This is just a quick little brief overview of some of the sightings that we've been working with on in regards to the architecture. Obviously, we'd love to put some stone and we'd like to use the rustic series lap for the woodstone siding. There's a small little differences between the stucco that we proposed between the threeplex units and the fourplex units, just to add a little bit of difference in character for colors. And then we just wanted to look at the open space. So one of the unique things about this site is the driveway that we have on the top of the site, which again is that northwest side. This is proposed as a private drive. It's twenty-six feet across. It's got a three-foot landscape buffer between the northwest property bound line and so adjacent to these buildings on the north side of these existing homes on the north side. And then it has the private drive. And so this private drive is proposed as its own lot. We've calling this lot nine. And so the reason that we've broken up a private drive and the common space lot, which is near the hammerhead emergency turnaround, is so that we would be able to dedicate specific cross-access rights in agreements with the existing neighbor and their existing rights so that we could have a nice clean separation of private open space as well as the private drive, which is used for access. And so that we just try to do that so it was cleaner so that when we write the C C N Rs and have the homeowners associations very clear on what we're needing to maintain and how our agreement that is existing and in place is also maintained with the neighbors. On the bottom of the screen here, which is that southeast side of the site, this is the proposed front doors of all of the units. So what we have is the private alley on the, or the private drive, sorry, on the top of the screen where you'd come in and you'd park your car, you'd pull into your two-car garage, and then you could walk through the rear door into the actual units. And then we perceive guests coming onto the site via the Adam Street pathway onto this five-foot wide detached sidewalk through here into the site. So what we put together through this whole situation is an open space that is protected by an easement and is all green space and walkable path all the way around into the emergency turnaround area and adjacent to the front of the homes. These homes are ten feet off of the property line and these areas are equivalent to the, or qualified open space. And I've checked that with Gardens or, yeah, sorry, with Garden City staff. So we have that put together and we feel pretty confident about that. Speaking of those cross-access easements, we've just to specifically call out those areas, the only difference that you'll see between the open space area that I have here in green and the cross-access easement is just to show exactly where we'll have easements drawn and exactly how we're proposing to put easements in order to protect the rights of the homeowners in this subdivision so that they can allow themselves to walk freely in this area across the front yards and across that area, just to protect that area. This area that was in green, that's now lot five shown in here. This is common lot number one or two. It's one of the two. And so that, just going back, that's where it's broken up into the private drive being one common lot and this little hammerhead area being another common lot. We're foreseeing putting storage in this area, sorry, stormwater storage in this area, having that area try to utilize some of that as well as having landscape in that specific spot. Now going back to comment I made earlier, just in regards to our iterations of this project, this was the original layout. At first, you won't really notice that much of a difference, but what you can see here at the top of the screen, we had originally had it only as a one-foot buffer between the actual adjacent property line or the property line and the driveway. We had the same with the driveway and then we just had the lots backing directly onto it. On the bottom of the screen here, we have the common lot. So what we had originally proposed was one large common lot that's sort of in the shape of a T or an upside-down T here. And then to not have each one of these townhome units, buildings or the lot lines extend all the way to the bottom lot there. So these lots right here were originally proposed as just having just the building area and the driveways as the lot. So the reason we had put that together was going to going back to the C C N Rs, talking about what we'd like to do there and how that would work and just saying, okay, instead of having an easement across your property, we're just going to make it one big lot, one big area that we'd put together. And that's going to be protected by the homeowners association. It's going to be written into the C C N Rs. It's convenient there. This goes back to our design review committee when staff actually brought up to it, I believe Jenna's brought it up to us and said, hey, there could be problems when you have a zero lot line for the front door immediately adjacent to the buildable area. So it just kind of goes back to a little bit of code review and some problems that that she's seen in the past and just said it would most likely be easiest if we extend these lot lines as we have shown here and then add that cross-access easement. And then one of the biggest changes that we had was we originally only had a five-foot setback along the building one and Adam Street. And basically what we had put in with that area is we were trying to maximize the internal common space. The problem being with that is we just weren't able to get the large landscaping area between Adam Street and the building here. So this was the original layout and this is just the small changes to the new proposed layout. As I mentioned, it went from a one-foot landscape buffer to now it's a three-foot landscape buffer with added landscaping along that top of this site right there. The private drive, there was a bit of confusion between the design review, if it was going to be a public or private. A C H D made a comment in their staff report that this should be a private drive. And we're totally fine with that. It's going to be owner HOA owned and maintained throughout there. We've updated this area between Adam Street and unit one. So now it is setback fifteen feet through there and it has, or sorry, ten feet through there. So it's a larger setback. So it originally was this five feet and now it's increased through there. And then one small thing that you may notice here is that the floor plan that we had originally proposed had a staircase walking up on the Adam Street side, and we've actually flipped that floor plan now so that when we go back to this new elevation, we're able to have that small balcony up there, just to add again more character to the site in that area. I just want to talk to you quickly about a couple of the P U D waivers that you'll notice. Yes, there are a number of waivers that we're requesting in it, and I just wanted to bring out or bring up a comment on a number of them. This was the original layout that was approved at P and Z. So this has a zero-foot side yard setback between the lot line and the buildings for the interior lots, so lot four and then common lot five is here in the middle and then building lot six. So we had put this as a zero-foot side yard setback. That's where Hannah Veal came in again and basically brought up that same concern. It wasn't so much of a concern because it was something that we can or could write an easement across and basically it's a fire, sorry, it's a fire code issue. Apparently there's some sort of concerns from the fire department saying that potentially it's a non-buildable lot, but we still need an easement. So it's just another layer of steps that we thought, hey, if we can get it out of the way, if we can go with a nice clean plan, that'll work better. So the P U D waiver in reference is P U D waiver number two A, which is the reduction, reduction of the setbacks, allowing for a zero-foot side yard setback on lot four and six. The new layout that we put together, which I submitted to Hannah just recently, which I do not believe actually was able to make it into the staff report, considering that it was submitted at so late. I apologize for that. I was away on holidays, but we got to it. What we've done now is we've just moved these lot lines over, lot line four, which originally was right on the building envelope and lot line six, which the same thing, we've offset them five feet to bring them up into that side yard setback. And then we've written where the original lot line was, we've written that easement. So just going back to this quick view right here, that's that protected easement which protects it, dedicates it to open space, that's it, dedicates it to common area. And so this is what we're proposing now, which is the P U D waiver number two A is not needed. If this is a hill to die on, we can go back to the original layout and go back to exactly what P and Z approved and was happy with. That's, that's easy for us to do. Again, it's just the idea being it saves us writing or saves us potentially a headache in the future if there's any sort of concerns with offsets or building on a zero lot line. So the idea would be to give it that space, bring it up into the compliance and try to meet it there. And then the other waiver that I wanted to bring up and is the P U D waiver number three A, which is the guest parking, we are proposing as being within the driveways. So as you notice in the site that we proposed, we do not have specific dedicated guest parking stalls. We did go through design review committee and ask for a number of air or design review committee asked us to go through another iterations to see if there was guest parking stalls that we could bring into the site. Originally, a design review committee asked us to move the entire roadway down ten feet, which would then allow us to put in four parallel parking stalls on the north side of the site. The problem that we ran into there was that as soon as we brought the driveway, the private drive down towards the buildings, it took it out of fire code compliance. So there's specific in the, in the fire report or in the report from the fire department, it specifically says that there's a distance, a minimum distance that needs to be maintained between the width of the road and the actual building itself. So the road being twenty-six feet means that we're within compliance of having a three-story building. However, that road being twenty-six feet needs to be a minimum fifteen feet away and a maximum, I believe it was thirty feet, but either way, what happened was when we brought this private drive towards the building to add that parallel parking, we ran out of that fire code compliance, which we came back to design review committee and said, this is what we're running into. Is this something that we can work with? So this is probably the biggest P U D waiver that we have is the fact that we do not have any specific dedicated pair, guest parking outside of the individual lots. So the proposal that we're putting together is to have two compact parking spots on each stall. So each unit is proposed as having a two-car garage as is code compliant there. So we have those required closed parking spaces provided. However, the guest parking spaces that were provided, that were required as per code for this site would be four. What we are proposing is to reduce the area within the driveways from a twenty-foot by twenty feet wide to add those, or it would technically just be, we need four of them, but we're having the driveways be reduced to a fifteen-feet depth, sixteen-feet width, which would make for that fifteen by eight two-car compact car spa parking spots. So these are the waivers that I wanted just to specifically address and bring up why we're choosing to go this way or why we're asking to go this way. And just to bring in into context on that we have looked at it, we've provided some other options. One of the options that we looked at was adding in parking stalls down in this common space area. The problem being with that, we no longer had the open space that was required. So it's basically, we kind of tried to pick the battle that we think was going to be the most beneficial to the community. We wanted to keep the open space because we like it in here as opposed to having parking in this area. And so we decided to go with asking, or we decided to ask for this waiver, which is meaning that we're going to have parking within the, within the actual, well, the design review committee agreed to this after we showed them the other iterations, planning and zoning, believe that this was sufficient for what we are requesting in this site. And then lastly, we've had some quick talks just with Republic Services and the other utility companies and have just general good remarks from them. Republic Services asked, the trash asked specifically that we're not proposing to do any sort of trashing closure with this site, given the size of the site. It'll just be individual trash and recycle bins for each unit. And I've spoken to them and they said, as long as they have a turnaround in this area, which it does meet the turnaround standards for them because it's the emergency turnaround, rolling the bins not onto Adam Street, but into this general area of the private drive is, is sufficient for what they are looking for. And I believe that that is everything that I wanted to talk about tonight. So I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Great, thank you. Questions? Thanks for bringing up the Republic Services. That's one we can, we need to pay attention to on this size, side. So any questions to Mr. Snyder at this point? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, good evening. And I thank you to Mr. Schneider for, I think, covering basically everything that I could think to cover on this particular item. I do want to briefly note that as Mr. Schneider had indicated, there were three late submittals that were reviewed in the staff report or reconciled in the draft potential decision document. And the, the first of which is going to the previously requested zero-foot setback. And there would be a need to add an additional easement requirement for the common lot to maintain. The common lot is calculated and approved by code. And there, in conjunction with that, there would need to be a removal of the waiver allowing for the zero-foot setback. And either way of identifying how to deal with the fire penetration issues, higher penetration being windows, doors, venting, et cetera. And we, we've seen projects go both ways. Having a bigger setback and then if it's common area, then they can give the easement back to the homeowners association. Or having a non-buildable easement and dedicating fire protection easement. In this case, it would be to lot four and six. And then as Mr. Schneider had also noted, it is And then um as Mr. Schneider had also noted, um, it is um. Number four, which would be on page one thirty four of the decision document, the easements. Um, in the refuse will be onsite, there is a note for utility easements to be required. Staff would suggest that perhaps that note including refuse, water, sewer, et cetera. Um, and not limit that to sometimes. Uh, usually you'll see that uh the public utility easements include drainage, et cetera, et cetera. Um, but perhaps having that spell out uh what those public utilities might be. Um, so that that uh refuse easement is not uh forgotten. Um, and in looking at the late submittals. Um. There, there was one thing that flagged for staff and that there was a landscape resubmital. Uh, the landscape resubmital does show that the street trees are classified as class one. Uh, those would need to be class two or three, and so that could be uh conditioned in there. Um. And then uh the other waivers um include a waiver uh calling this upfront side uh setback. Waiver and encroachment uh to allow for all of the development to fit on the site. Um, and then as noted by Mr. Schneider, the the guest parking would have a reduction in size, so there'd be compact spaces for the guest parking. Um, there are inadequate uh adequate, not inadequate um number of parking spaces that have been proposed in this uh application. Um. And then it should also be noted that the garage, the garages are uh proposed at nineteen point eight feet rather than the twenty feet, so almost that twenty feet. Um, for the parking space requirement, uh code does require twenty feet. Um. And then. Uh, staff does also want to note that this is a planned unit development. Um, and typically there's a lot of discussion on the variety of housing and plan unit developments. However, this application is for seven units and that uh requirement is triggered at ten units. And with that, I stand for any questions?
Yeah, I want to make sure I picked up these things, so um. Need to add a easement requirement. Uh, on the common lot. Uh. Where the property line has been extended to deal with the setback issue. And. Remove two A waiver. Add a. Uh, trash. Add trash to the easement. On the common lot.
Mayor, that is correct. And for whoever may be the maker of the motions, should they please? It's um condition number four, dealing with both of those easements. Um, page thirteen on the draft decision, which I believe is on one thirty four of the packet. And then number five, the removal of the waiver um on the same page.
Somebody picking that up? I don't, you're on page one thirty four?
I believe so. It's page thirteen of the draft decision in the decision doc that starts on one twenty one. And so.
Okay, I get, okay, page. I don't have numbers on my decision doc, I just have. Page packets. So what packet page are we on?
Um, mayor, I believe it's page one thirty four.
One thirty four, uh, I don't have a number four. On one thirty four, starts at the top of the page with number five.
And then it would be page one thirty three, I believe.
So uh, one thirty three. Number four submission obtained, Ada County approved. Addresses. So I don't know where I'm. Missing that. For the benefit of the audience, this packet's over four hundred pages long, so. Sometimes logistically, we. Have to make sure we're. In the right spot.
Okay. Mayor, members of.
No spoilers, no spoilers.
My apologies, um, it would be page one thirty. Um, again, my apologies.
That's right.
Writing down the page numbers.
Oh, I, I just didn't go back for us, or it says easements, okay. So uh, again. We're adding an easement requirement. Uh. And subscribe next to the four flex unit. We're removing the two A waiver. The. We're adding the language to number four here to include an easement for trash pickup. You want us to name Republic Services or just generically trash pickup?
Um, mayor, um, I would suspect that a generic easement may be better.
Uh, and the next one I had was class two street trees instead of class one.
Um, mayor, that's correct, and that's not in the decision documented in any.
So that's an add.
That would be an add or a clarification.
Clarification. Um. And the next one was guest parking. Space. Size reduction to. Um. Sixteen by ten, was that, did I, did I remember that right?
Um, and mayor, I believe the waivers should be set.
Waiver. Yeah, it should be in here. Okay.
Thank you.
It is, I'm sure it is. Okay. Counsel, any questions to staff? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um. Now I will open the public hearing on. S U B F Y twenty twenty two dash zero 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 seven. Uh, no one in the room has signed up to testify uh regarding this project. Do we have anyone joining us? Remotely uh that wishes to testify? I've got one hand waving there, Lisa.
Yes, correct.
I can't see who it is.
Uh, Dawn May.
Okay, uh, Mr. May, if you can hear me, uh, floor is yours, sir. Uh. Please uh restrict your comments to three minutes.
Thank you very much. Uh, yes, the um. One twenty East Forty First Street in Garden City. Um, yeah, I'm in uh great support of this project. I think that the wave, if the waivers that they're requesting are. Are suitable. I think that the guests, they've done a tremendous job with their guest parking. Kind of trying to solve that problem, and that's all I just request an approval of the project. I think uh we need as much uh, you know, diversified development as we can get. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. May. Uh, counsel, any questions to Mr. May? Okay, hearing none. Uh, anyone else? Uh, use the. Raise your hand prompt on the Zoom. Um. Oh, I saw a flash up there. In the upper left-hand corner.
That, yeah.
Oh, that was not okay. Okay. Uh, let the record reflect that uh Mr. May's testimony was the only testimony offered, and it was in support of the project. With that, uh, I'll close the public hearing on S U V F Y. Oh, I won't close the public hearing. Uh. Mr. Snyder, you get the last word. Do you have anything to add? Okay, thank you. Uh, now I'll close the public hearing on S U V F Y twenty twenty two dash zero 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 seven. Council, it's properly before you for uh this deliberation in action.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to approve. But I did not do a very good job of capturing all the notes. So can my motion be stipulated based on the. The accommodation of the late submittals and as recommend and to follow the recommendations by staff?
It can.
I so will.
Hey, I'll second that a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, the court call roll.
Council member Paige?
Yes.
Council member Heller?
Yes.
Council member Jacobs?
Yes.
Council member Jorgensen?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Next item on the agenda is S U V F Y twenty twenty two dash zero 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 eight Chandler's Place. Uh, this is also a public hearing item. Uh, we will follow the same procedure that we did on the last. Uh. Application. And um. You're representing the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Welcome. It's a pleasure to have you here. Uh, if you would, uh, give us your name and address for the record and you may begin.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, it's my first time in front of you guys. Um, I'm used to being on the public side, recent hire for Kimley Horn and. The agenda does state, state Nicolette, but she is, we got double booked, so she's actually at City Boise right now, so.
Oh, you got, got invited.
Taking the wheel on this one.
Hey, uh, be sure and speak up a little bit and end of the mic there. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. My name is Joe Dodson with Kimley Horn, eleven hundred West Idaho Street, Suite two ten, Boise, Idaho, eight three seven oh two. In this project. Before you tonight is for the Chandler Place, Chandler's Place, which is essentially twelve townhomes. This is our applicant team. Mr. Russell is the developer and owner. Um, we do have Kelly online as one of our engineers. And our architect as well, Jennifer Moore, she will be speaking during this presentation as well, and then after she's done, I will come back and wrap things up. As you guys know, uh, a lot of work goes into these things before we get to, before you especially. So just a quick overview of the timeline. Here we have a uh zoomed out vicinity map of the project area, showing our proximity to Chinon as well as the fairgrounds and the greenbelt. Property overall is nearly seven tenths of an acre. On the future land use map, it is designated as mixed use residential, and it is adjacent to a Main Street corridor, and as you can see also with the. The dashed red line, it is within a commercial node as noted on the future land use map. Makes you residential calls for higher densities, especially adjacent to that Main Street corridor. The property is currently zoned R three and we are not requesting any kind of reason. Our applications. Before you tonight are actually a planned unit development that is being done through a combined preliminary and final plat. Here's a zoomed insight plan to just show the adjacent uses uh to the northeast. You have a new detached single family home that had to obtain a conditional use permit to be constructed. Then to the east are a number of duplex units. Uh, to the southwest is a, this lot here. Is a essentially an A C H D lot that has a number of easements that encumber it. It is not owned by anything except A C H D. And to the west, we have some industrial uses. Along or to the west of fifty second street. So again, the applications before you tonight are combined preliminary and final plat, which is being processed as a P U D and designer view. Again, property size just under seven tenths of an acre. It is for twelve single family units for sale, both detached and attached, so there's. Two fourplexes and then four single detached units. Overall, the density is approximately seventeen and a half units per acre. Here we have a parking exhibit. We have the required parking per code. For the two enclosed parking per unit and then the required number of guest spaces. However, one of the caveats of the guest space is one we are counting on street. Um, we are also, one of our waivers through the P U D is requesting a reduction to the guest parking space sizes, just reducing its width to nine. All of the parking noted in green does comply with Garden City Development Code. We did submit this, uh, I say late. To the city, however, it was prior to the planning and zoning commission hearing. At that hearing, uh. Hannah noted the. The open space does comply with code, so we are providing inaccess of the required open space area for the project. And it does include all of our amenities, which we have some community garden, a pollinator garden, as well as just general open space. Along the southeast boundary here. A true late submittal for the council hearing was this updated landscape plan. Did send this in earlier this, sorry. About mid last week, not sure if the. Jenna and Hannah got a chance to review it, but uh all we did to modify this was update the east boundary. That has the added shrubbery that was noted during the planning and zoning commission here. Other than that, there's been no major changes. We also did include, I'll see if I hit it there later, but just added notes for the. Proposed fencing on the north boundary per the discussions with the neighborhood of the north, and then noting that there is an existing fence along that east boundary. Which is a wood fence that's not on our property, it's on the adjacent property. Did want to note that we are complying with the sustainability point requirements regarding city here, the solar collectors, strip irrigation, dedicated recycling bins and onsite. Stormwater filtration and retention. At this point, I will, well, I guess quickly, yes. There's five different floor plans here. Um, and a height variation of four and three stories. Um, as you can tell. There's a type A's, type B, C, C one, and then type D, type D and C one are the three story units. Adjacent to the single family home to the north. Everything else is four stories. And have varying floor plans, which our architect will get into. During the design review and the uh planning and zoning commission hearing, it was determined that we do qualify and comply with the. Requirements of the P U D code for the unit variation. Um, specifically the two that planning and zoning. Noted were the floor plan variations and the attached versus detached units. In addition, during design review and at a lesser extent, the planning and zoning commission, building height and the number of floors in general, as well as the site location of the units. And whether there's interior in unit, units were also noted as complying with the unit variation code. And at this point, I will hand it over to architect and then I will finish up.
Good evening. Uh, thank you for hearing us, Jennifer Moore, uh, partner architect at Collab Architects, uh, seven fifty West Main, or right, seven fifty West Bannock Street. Um, number six eleven.
I get close to the mic and there.
I was, I was trying to yell. Well, thank you.
That's your baby up there. I know you're, you're looking in that direction.
Absolutely. So yeah, like you said, we're really excited to to kind of present this to you guys this uh this evening and and thank you again for for hearing us. Um, and taking your evening to. To make our city look great. So. Um, what you have before you right now is kind of some conceptual elevations, and this isn't really uh what the building looks like. This is, these are some elevations that we use to take inspiration from. And so these are from various firms and they're they're just precedent images, kind of what what we're taking are are. You know, some of our design moves and some of different elements that you'll see kind of moving forward uh from. Just in the real world. So like Joe said, this is our building layout. You've got a couple of amenity areas, a little pollinator garden, some open space, a community garden. As well as your kind of detached versus attached units. Um, this is the Allworth Street side elevations, and so one uh comment from D R was to add additional finstration. Into the street elevation to help kind of break out some of that blank wall feeling. And as we'll get into a little bit later, you know, there's some things that aren't really showing here exactly just because of the elevate, the way elevations typically. Kind of show in architectural drawings, but we did add kind of a window, those windows and those two green fields on that first floor. To help add some more finstration on that pedestrian level. Uh, this is the fifty second street view. Um, similar, there was a, the comment at D R and planning and zoning was that this. Uh, this is the fifty second street view. Um, similar, there was a, the comment at D R and planning and zoning was that this does meet the finessration. And we've got those recessed entries, you'll see a little bit later as well, um, as well as some, you know, different moves and different finessrations. And then in this elevation, and so gonna skip through these a little bit quicker. Um, so what's not showing here is some, some kind of variety and earth and color in that kind of gray field. And so you can kind of see up in this little bit. It's a little, if I can get this. This little area right here, that's kind of what that gray field is intended to look like. Um, and so you're not really getting that variety and we'll, we'll have another image here later that helps show that. Uh, similar here, you know, we've got some of those moves and and some of those, you're starting to see some of those shadow lines going in there. Similar here, one comment that we did receive from design review and we've incorporated it here was some of that was adding some glass into the into the garage doors to help break up that facade and give it a little bit more transparency. And we've added glass. It's either frosted or transparent. Um, similar here. Uh, and I will go back just a little. So this is one of those four flexes. This is actually the four flex that's closest to the Allworth side and you can kind of see how that's um, you know, how we're getting some of that height and some of, some of those elements that are encouraged through the Main Street corridor. And then moving on to this, this is a little bit closer to what we were, that was kind of referencing in terms of the shadow lines. Um, so in order to get that exterior mod- modulation, we're using a variety of recessed materials. You see that green field is a little bit recessed from that, that gray field to give it an appearance of a solid versus maybe avoid or or a lesser block inside of that. Uh, a little bit of a trim that surrounds that, that teal field as well. That'll help provide some shadow lines and some things to just kind of give some relief, some detail. Uh, and similar to those L shaped panels and some of those punched openings, just to add additional shadow lines, additional finessration, additional detailing. And so this is kind of one of the, one of the other conditions that we grappled with through design review was to provide a um, variety of colors and detailing of siding materials used and color schemes. And so we reviewed all of this and we do believe that we are meeting the intent of that comment. Now that what you see here is not a variety of color per se, we are providing a variety of detailing, we're providing a variety of kind of finessration. You can see some of those things happening in some of these. You know, window detailings and we'll, we'll show those a little bit later as well. Um, just a variety of window detailing, uh, a variety of modulation, kind of that interior back and forth. As opposed to a variety in color. And I think that that, what that helps do is not only does it help to kind of elevate the development by using that detailing, using those varieties. Um, it also helps to keep a cohesive development and avoid that piecemeal development that's discouraged in designer view. By having a cohesive, a cohesive color scheme for a relatively small development, we are keeping it in a very refined, a very kind of consistent and more making a place in this central kind of drive aisle that's intended to have permeable pavers. So you'll have a little bit more place making. And again, this is a similar condition, you know, just adding, kind of emphasizing the shadow lines, some of those details, some of those just small things that add a little bit more interest. And then I'm just gonna go through the floor plan just very quickly. Um, as Joe said, you know, we um, designer view and planning and zoning did agree that we complied with the variety of housing and floor plans. And and one of the things that it's, it is very easy to um, measure number of bedrooms and detached and attached. Um, but another way that we do believe that we are complying is through the use of these flex spaces and bonus spaces. So areas that can be used for a variety of different uses depending on each owner. So it not only is it a variety through number of bedrooms, but it's a variety through uses. So maybe your first floor in that bedroom slash office in a purple would be an office, working home, a playroom, a meeting room, things like that. So you'll see that kind of that purple area kind of throughout on the first floor and then on most top floors as well. And then finally, this is the, you know, interior inspiration. So one of, this isn't necessarily what the interiors will look like. Um, it's, but it is just kind of a spring point to of what we intend to, to kind of provide, which be high quality materials and and things like that, just throughout the, the, the building.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. So again, Joe Dodson with Kim Lee Horn. To finish up, I will briefly go over what happened at both of the hearings. Um, again, we received recommendations approved from both the designer view commission as well as the planning building commission. Um, they noted that we met our variety of housing, planning and zoning commission differed and the designer view and wanted to keep the internal fifth parking space. There was some discussion of maybe replacing that internal space with more open space. Planning zoning wanted to keep that additional guest space. Um, the developer is okay with either, just for the record. Uh, since the P and Z hearing, we did add that additional glazing on the garage doors as, as recommended, and we added more finessration to the Allworth elevations, especially the first level. And we also added shrubs to the east boundary that I noted that was shown on the revised landscape plan. We do request approval from the city council tonight for this combined preliminary and final plat and P U D. And I will stand for any questions that you have. And again, we do have our engineer online. And Jennifer, as you know, for any architectural questions.
Okay, um, any question, counsel? I, I did notice that we'll probably need to add a trash pickup easement under uh the easement section number four, in addition to the public utilities for a lot thirteen there, your private private lot.
Sure, that I, that makes sense to me. I, I did not note the specific waivers that we're requesting, but it is for those interior setbacks and then the parking space dimensions, but
Okay.
I had not seen that easement comment yet.
Great. Uh, I don't see any questions. Thank you. Uh, you'll have an opportunity for uh, to close up uh, after the public hearing. We will now hear from Ms. Thornborough.
Right, and mayor, members of the council, thank you for your patience while I pulled up the packet. Um, and uh, thank you to both Mr. Dodson and Ms. Moore on their presentation as well. Um.
That's the wrong. This is, this was the first.
Oh, yep, it did. Um, what I was meaning was there we go. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Um, see a site plan. I think I'm ready to go. Um, I'll specifically uh, speak to the waivers and the reconciliations. And uh, so the, the one item uh, really to reconcile between the, the two recommendations is the parking space. Uh, guest parking space. Um, the design review committee had suggested that a terminus view uh, would be a better use of the space than a, um, I guess parking space. And so as you come in from fifty second street, if, if this was landscaping, that would be uh, what those that or artwork or whatever it may be, a terminus view. Um, it, it would read better for the development than uh, seeing a car parked in that space. Um, and so that, that's really the big discrepancy between the recommendations. Um, and then to go back. Um, as the mayor had mentioned, uh, item number four on page two forty seven, the easements. Uh, staff is suggesting that uh, better language of those public utilities. Um, where it's not incorporated in the draft potential uh, document, include all potential services, including refuse, et cetera, um, in, in that language. And then um, the next item uh, would include um, the elevations that you've seen, some of the, the changes. Uh, just uh, going back perhaps for consent agenda at this point in time uh, to review the finessrations, the garage doors, et cetera. And that's really uh, due to, again, let's just get rid of that guy. And these units right here, because the adjacent lot is owned by A C H D. And the likelihood that that side lot will be the street pacing unit indefinitely is a real possibility. And so they're wanting to make sure that those end units um, do read well uh, from Allworth Street. Um, and then number nineteen, the terminal view from fifty second street. Uh, that would be whether or not that uh, the council uh, would allow for and the removal of that guest parking space. Um, the waivers, the, the waivers included would need to include the one onsite guest parking space, but this would be for two uh, two guest spaces to be removed from the application. Um, just to note while I'm on waivers, the other waivers that are requested are reduced setbacks internal to the development. Uh, parking dimensions of nine by twenty instead of ten by twenty and more than four units accessed off a common drive. And then um, I think the last item that would need to be reconciled is number three on page two fifty three. Again, uh, speaking to the waiver of it would be one or two parking space allowances. And that's three D.
So, so so I'm not infused. Which is getting less difficult to do as I get older. Internally, we're talking about the parking space that you would deadhead into when you turned in the project. Okay, so that's one. The other one, you've lost me on. You said?
Believe that Mr. Dodson has the parking here. Um, where the red are the guest parking spaces.
Uh huh.
And so there's one that's on.
Oh, one on street. Okay. Okay, uh.
So Mr. Eric reminds, so I'm not confused, not too.
Okay.
So we're still saying there's one on street.
Um, mayor.
Go ahead, sir.
Councilmember Jorgensen, that is correct.
Okay.
There is a request for one on street.
Okay.
Or a waiver of one.
And, um, Mr. Mayor. Jenna, if I read that, I don't know, I can't remember if I read that or not, just that's allowed, one on the street is allowed for code. Did I, did I read that correctly?
And mayor, councilmember Jacobs, um, I would have to look into the specifics, but the, the answer, the short answer is uh, right now that's set as a waiver, so I don't believe so. Um, but I can look at the code. Um, so the answer is I need to look at code or the staff report, uh, but I, I believe that that is a genuine waiver request at this point in time.
But clearly fifty second street dead ends down, down there and it's not a hey, any other questions? Were you finished? I stopped you, I think.
Mayor, uh, I, I am finished. I do apologize that I, I kind of bumbled a little bit through that. Um, uh, but in short, the, the biggest reconciliation to make the, the two recommendations match, if that is the council's intent, would be to address this parking space. Uh, and whether or not it should be a terminus view. I should note that code does have um, code, there is code related to terminal views and that's eight four C four B three. Um, but technically it does not apply to this application, so not having a terminal view or terminus view would not be a waiver. Um, and the reason it doesn't apply in this instance is because it applies to commercial projects rather than strictly residential projects.
Okay. Think we got it. Okay, yeah. Any questions? Any further questions, staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Thornborough, sorry. Um, my, as random as this is, my question is regarding the color scheme.
Okay.
Um, is the intention to, as is your interpretation is rendered that the color scheme would be this gray and shadows?
Um, mayor, uh, councilmember Jorgensen, I will defer the color scheme to the applicant um, on that. Um, I do not believe that they have a, a slide related to the color board. And this one may have it. This one does have it. Let me zoom in. Um, here's a little bit of a color board on the materials.
Thank you. That helped.
Hey, uh, any further questions for staff? Okay. We will now open a public hearing on S U V F Y twenty twenty two dash zero 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 eight Chandler's Place. We have no one uh, at City Hall here signed up to testify. Is there anyone that's joined us via Zoom that wishes to testify on this application? If so, raise your hand. I see a hand up there uh, for Dylan Bevins. Uh, if you can hear me.
Yes, hello?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Dylan, that's not the way, that's not your name. I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, sir. Diane Evans, um, four oh three East Fifty Second Street. My husband and I are the property immediately north of this development. We just built our home and moved in in April of twenty twenty two, so very new construction. And we appreciate all of the accommodations that the developer has made, um, including the three stories adjacent to our property, fencing and landscaping. Um, we had a chance to review the recently resubmitted landscaping plan and had one more request, if that's possible. Um, and that we were looking at the types of shrubs. Um, and they're not very tall, maybe eight or nine feet tall, and we were hoping for um, taller shrubs for privacy with a three story uh, you know, div- building nine feet from our property line, if that was possible.
Okay, we will, uh, I will inquire with the applicant when they come back up and ask that question for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Anyone else wish to testify? Anyone else wish to testify that's joined us remotely? Hey, I don't see anybody. Let the record reflect that everyone that has requested to testify has had an opportunity to. We'll ask the applicant back up. And I think the the question. Diane Beavens was the screening height of the plant material between your common boundary line. So can you respond to that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. And again, thanks for having us. I didn't get to meet Mr. and Mrs. Beavens, but I know that they've had a good working relationship with the developers. I'm glad that she recognizes that, too. We did add more shrubs and volume to that boundary between, again, there's going to be that six foot fence. There's not enough space to include trees, like typical trees. So we will do what we can to add the quite, I can't remember the term for those tall, you know, columnar type of evergreens, but that's essentially what we're proposing to do there. There's a specific name. I'm out of landscape architects. I don't remember what they are, but we're going to install those to help with basically a screen law of vegetation, which should be above the fence. And I hope at least eight feet as well. But again, I can't speak to the specifics of how high they will grow. I just don't have that expertise, but I assure you, and we assure Mrs. Beavens that we're working to do that and maintain that screening that we promised.
Okay, very good.
I did have a couple of other comments.
Yes, certainly. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, Mr. Mayor, council, thanks for having us and wanted to just clarify on the, the code for the one on street. Jenna can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, in Hannah's staff reported to note that eight point four D did, does allow one space to count. Eight dash four D, on one on street parking space to count towards that required guest space. Again, our, the, our client is amenable to either landscaping or the fifth space internal to remain or go away. Whichever council is purty on that, we're okay with both. And then for the common driveway waiver, I noted this in the previous hearings. Technically, we were proposing a private street, which would be named, so we wouldn't need the common driveway waiver. We're also okay with that staying in just in case for some reason we can't get a private street named by the county, but either way it will function the same as a common drive on a common lot or a private street on a common lot. Same easements, same road width, everything will stay the same. So if you guys, if the council prefers to keep that waiver in just to cover yourselves, completely understood. Other than that, we are in agreement with all of the conditions of approval. And we'll stand for any final questions. I urge you to ask me anything you want.
Can, can you address, we had a query about the color scheme?
Yes, correct.
So exactly on the color scheme, and I don't know if that PowerPoint is still open. Okay, if it's not, that's fine. So yeah, the intent for the color scheme is that teal color with the gray field would be kind of a multi-colored horizontal plank system, so it would be either glass fiber reinforced planks or a fiber cement plank, some sort of product with some variation in the gray tone to add instead of things to blank gray field, it would be a multi, a multi-tone field to add some movement and add some some kind of variation in that with that teal background. And that would be throughout the entire development with various modulation and windows, different window trims and things like that. And so that's kind of our proposal to meet the intent of that variety and color and material requirement.
Thank you. Any final questions, council? Great, thank you.
Appreciate it much.
With that, I will close the public hearing. On S U V F Y twenty twenty two dash zero 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 eight matters properly before the council for deliberation and action.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I, I have done a quick review of current city code eight dash four C regarding the terminal, the terminus view, and I'm satisfied that that applies to a non-residential structure. So from my perspective, I am absolutely okay with waiving that as a requirement because I don't read that as a requirement. So I would prefer to see that be a parking spot to hopefully provide less of a burden to the street and acknowledging that that's a, that's a street that doesn't serve, doesn't serve a busy purpose. I I'm ready to to offer a motion unless there's other comments.
Motion's in order. We can always discuss further if you get a second.
Okay, then I.
Apologize personally. I, I want to. Do we need to include a recommendation regarding trash?
Yes.
That will be in my, my motion. Is there any other?
You know, I think you hit on the two, the, the terminus parking spot and.
And then I saw a waiver for the parking, guest parking spaces to be reduced to nine by twenty. A waiver for that. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I, I move to approve, let me get the number here. Apologize. Scrolling to the top of the decision document. You approve this application? I'm going to leave that at that. I'm very tired of scrolling here. Oh, there we go. It's a good idea. Thank you. Jacobs, I've moved to approve.
Number G three.
Yes, thank you. S U B F Y twenty twenty two zero 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 eight Chandler's place. With the addition of a specific easement for trash and all other potential services that, that language. To grant a waiver reduction for the guest parking sizes to nine by twenty. And three, three D parking space deficiency to address that by allowing one spot to be waived or street parking and to waive a requirement for a terminus view. As, as it does not, in my mind, apply to this to residential.
I would second that motion.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Here now the Kirk call roll.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes. Everybody good to keep going? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go move on to item G four. This is also a public hearing. This is a code text amendment. CPA F Y twenty twenty two dash zero 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 four regarding accessory dwelling units. Council. Ms. Thor Moro and Mr. Wadams will be reporting on this. I can tell you ahead of time, it's going to be a recommendation on these next three items that we go through at least two and probably three readings on these. So at the end of the day, we'll be requesting a read by title only. But we'll get a staff report and any discussion that council wants to have that maybe can be addressed in a subsequent reading. Fair enough. Okay. Right.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you. On this item CPA fiscal year twenty twenty two, number four for accessory dwelling units. And this actually started in September of twenty twenty. And at, at that time, there had been an application that came through for an accessory dwelling unit that exceeded six hundred square feet. That was ultimately denied based on current code. The Planning and Zoning Commission had recommend or had requested to work with staff to review code and they identified some recommendations back in twenty twenty. However, they're just now working their way through the code amendment process. And in reviewing the code with the Planning and Zoning Commission, a number of both Idaho and non Idaho codes were reviewed to see how they address accessory dwelling units. And at the time, there was a design review committee. The design review committee also looked at the code. And they're, they have looked and made comments on the code, but there's not a formal recommendation from the design review committee. However, they do have their comments embedded and in the tiny home discussions, for example, as well as minutes. When this came through, the one difference between the two recommending bodies was what to do with parking and that section has been relocated to parking completely. So it's not in the A D U code that you'll see tonight. And the, the Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended an increase of a maximum size limit for A D U units or accessory dwelling units to eight hundred square feet. It's currently six hundred square feet or fifty percent of the principal structure, whichever is greater. There was some discussion whether or not there should be a cap on overall size. And they, there was discussion where they felt perhaps fifteen hundred square feet was too big to be considered an A D U. However, that did not get incorporated in their final recommendation for the ordinance that's there, that's before you tonight. It's also noteworthy that there was a split vote. There was a three, two vote on the recommendation that you see tonight. Not for that reason, not for the, the cap size. But there were two members that felt that perhaps a better way to address an accessory dwelling unit would be on lot size versus principal structure size. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Jenna. So I understand as a city boy, I know their code, they have it on lot size, don't they?
And I believe their cap is at seven hundred square feet, but they may be the one that is on lot size.
And I think, and then they have a cap of seven hundred. So you can't exceed that regardless of the lot size.
And I believe that is correct. I, I do recall that seven hundred is the number in Boise's code. And I do know that most codes do look at if there's a percentage that it's the percentage of the structure, but there, there was one code and it may have been Boise that it was a percentage of the lot.
Thank you.
And I might note that while I completely understand that, that may be something that if the council moves that way, we may need to research just based on lot and the way that lots are developing, if it makes sense as a citywide. Or if there should be something that's a percentage of a lot based on zoning districts, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. Think there's some natural constraints on most of the lots. You know, the meat setbacks and. But and I think it may, this may be a question for Mr. Wadams, but an A D U code would or would not supersede the private covenant and subdivisions. C C and ours.
Well, I think, Mr. Mayor, about researching that, I think generally speaking, the code would would trump the C C and ours, I would think. Although if you have a conflict between the C C and ours and the, and the code, that would be interesting. And to give you a definitive answer, I didn't want to research that. I think the code would trump the C C and ours, but I think the H O A could have an argument to the contrary of that as well.
Sure.
So I can, I'm happy to research that, put a little memo together.
I, I, I'd, I'd be kind of interested in that because there's an expectation when you move into a subdivision that has covenant's conditions and restrictions. And I'm just thinking maybe if, if we're going to have an A D U code, we ought to at least have some discussion over whether we want to essentially violate that expectation when you buy a piece of property in a subdivision that's under the control of a homeowners association. I think Jenna mentioned some ways to deal with that, which could be embedded in the in the code. Where it would apply and where it would not apply. So that's just a comment I was, I was thinking about. The other thing I just wanted to kind of openly discuss is this this A D U amendment texts. Jenna does or does not distinguish between residential and commercial property?
And mayor, there's no specific regulation that distinguishes between the two.
Okay, I, I wanted to, I think that's another area that personally I kind of like because there are, you can think of one business along in the area of fifty second and Allworth, where I've seen a R V park there. And some businesses may want somebody on site for security purposes, or they may want to have might be part of a employment benefit and keep somebody on site. So I want to make sure the council that we all understood that this isn't an exclusive issue to residential housing, it would be on any parcel in town unless as a part of this process, as we go through the three readings, we make a determination that we should identify it differently.
And Mr. Mayor, in that scenario you spoke of, as I read this proposed A D U and A D U structure would as written would be required to have a foundation. Right? So an A D U as an R V, you know, adjacent to a business for, say, a security watch person would really be something that would have to be corrected.
Yes, yeah, exactly. I've just, just thinking that there, a business may want to have an A D U.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and
Storage units often do.
Storage units do, absolutely. And I think as we work through this coming up with a, with a size. There's, there's two ways I think of it is you've got the size of the unit, is there is there any value? And I haven't looked at a bunch of these. Are we talking about occupancy? In other words, you want a seven hundred square foot unit with unlimited occupancy? I, I mean, I don't know the answer to that. I'm just I think the A D U issue has really come up with the and come to the forefront with the rise in housing, housing costs. And and we're in an economy for some that having an A D U that could bring in additional income to the primary, you know, could be an important component, but when I think of a loading on a particular lot, if you're going to double or triple or quadruple. Double or triple or quadruple the occupancy on that lot, whether that's something we ought to be looking at or not. So this is something to kind of peruse between now and the next reading.
Mr. Mayor, personally, I'm in favor of having a cap on the size of these things, because. You mentioned lot size and things like that, but just. Seems from experience of people, we always say, oh, that will never happen, and then sure enough, it happens. I. You know, talk whatever it is, right? People find a way to get around it. And if you have a commercial building or it's a lot. You could theoretically have a ten thousand, fifteen thousand square foot. Building, and if the code is fifty percent of that size, you could be building a five thousand square foot. ADU on that property, I don't know if that's really what we want to do. So I, most cities, it seems like Boise included. Have about eight hundred. Eight hundred square foot cap, it's designed for apartment or Airbnb, you know. Whatever, so I think I would be in favor of just investigating, what would be a. A uh. A cap that would, that would work and have that in place by one of the readings.
Mr. Mayor, may I hit a couple of points?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Uh, I should have let you guys finish before I started down my little.
Are you done?
I have one point, but please go ahead.
No, go ahead, go ahead, Jenna.
And I I just had one comment, Mayor, uh, thank you, into Councilmember Jacobs, um, cap. Um, I might uh, point out that I believe it's California that has a twelve hundred foot. Um, kind of a base, and I don't know if that would be a a starting place that you'd want us to look at. Um, and then it's been established elsewhere if. Or if you would like to stick at the eight hundred or if there's direction, I guess there.
Um, if if by her council member Jacobs, uh, he was interested in doing a little more research on it or?
A little more research, I guess. Well, there's twelve hundred, eighteen, I don't really have a, the thought of what that cap should be, I just think we should have a cap, because fifty percent of.
Okay.
Is very open-ended, it could be as big as whatever property. That's being built on, so I think if we do some research of what other jurisdictions have, whether it's California or Boise or. Wherever, come up with something that makes sense for Garden City, that'd be great.
Okay, good project for Liz.
My, yes, the interns will be all over. Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of things I wanted to point out, if if now's a good time, uh, my panel starts on page four fifteen of the packet. And it talks about some of the things that we were just discussing, examples from other jurisdictions, so. The first paragraph under the analysis on page four fifteen does share what other jurisdictions have for ADUs, for example. Boise's regulation uh, allows for up to seven hundred square feet period, and we've already, we just talked about that. Portland, Oregon has another example of eight hundred square feet or seventy-five percent of the principal dwelling unit, whichever is less, not whichever is more, but whichever is less. California's default, like the stormer was just talking about, is twelve hundred square feet or fifty percent of the principal structure. Um, so, and what this code initially, this was initially, it said four hundred square feet. Uh, or up to fifty percent of the size of the principal dwelling, whichever is greater. And then after planning and zoning, took a look at it, planning and zoning, thought eight hundred square feet was maybe better than four hundred, but again, that's all within the purview of the council here. Whatever, whatever council thinks the sweet spot is, you could also, you could also distinguish between residential, commercial. Uh, up to, you could also uh, distinguish like, for another example, at a Boise is Boise requires two bedrooms. Requires at least one dedicated parking space on site. Now, the recommendation from staff is not to address parking right here in this ADU amendment, because we're dealing with parking in a different code amendment. So um, so the recommendation is to really not worry about parking in this code amendment. What this code amendment really is, is, you know, we've been looking uh, at ways to make housing more affordable. And give residents more variety of options for in the future, that's what this is all about, making housing more affordable. Um, I, and I'll include for the second reading, there's an article out of Meridian. Uh, just from last month, just from a couple of weeks ago, Meridian struggles to find consensus on a housing code changes. And they're going through the same process that we are right now, so Boise's uh, amending their land use code. Meridian's looking at ADUs, tiny homes, so on and so forth, similar to what we're doing here in Garden City, but it's really. To find other, hopefully more affordable housing options is what the, you know, one of the goals is behind here. Um. So if you look at the actual ordinance, uh, it starts on page four twenty-eight, uh, there's a couple of things I just wanted to point out. On page four twenty-nine, uh, the the recommendation for planning and zoning is eight hundred square feet or up to fifty percent of the size of the principal dwelling unit, whichever is greater. That changed from, like I said, from the staff recommendation. And then it gets into um, specifics, uh, specifically on um, standard number twelve on page four twenty-nine. It says accessory dwelling unit shall be clearly incidental to principles, the principal structure. I'll just tell um, council now that staff. Ms. Thornborough and I have been going back and forth on whether we should define what incidental means, I don't, I don't think we need. To decide that tonight, but what what does incidental mean? If it's not defined, I could see people arguing something is or something isn't incidental, so. Probably for the second reading, staff will come back and make a recommendation to the council on whether that should be defined. But it goes through and and it has all the other standards in here. Um. So some jurisdictions have a cap, some jurisdictions don't have a cap. Um. And I think those were the highlights that I wanted to hit on. The the only other thing on the noticing. Mr. Mayor, is it the four, five and six don't have the ordinance numbers on there, so uh, I think we'll be okay, because we're doing three readings. Um. But four, five and six on the agenda do not have the ordinance numbers on there, so thank you.
Okay. Hey, any further discussion or questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, what what I'm recommending is three readings. And and then we save the decision until the third reading, so it'll be, so I'll have to decide anything tonight, sorry.
Yes. Okay, um. Entertain an action for the first reading.
Mr. Mayor, we do need to open the public hearing.
Oh, we've got a public hearing, it's right on my agenda. Um. With that, I'll open the public hearing on CPA FY twenty twenty-two dash zero 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 four, this is the ADU text amendment. Uh, no one at the. The city hall here is signed up to testify, we we have Mr. May uh, online. Um, Mr. May, you're recognized.
Wow, thank you very much. Um, and thank you for looking at refining this code, uh, really, four hundred square feet is just so small. Um, accessory dwelling unit should not be restricted to eight hundred square feet. I own a very small seven hundred twenty square foot rental property, and I can tell you, it's not nearly large enough for my parents to live in. It's barely large enough for a single tenant. Uh, with the most common use of an ADU to be to have older, the older generations live on the same property. It would prevent people from building an even moderately sized home for their parents on the same property. The typical small-sized home is about twelve hundred to twelve hundred and fifty square feet. So I respectfully request that you just increase the maximum size to twelve hundred fifty square feet. Thank you very much for your time.
Great, thank you, Mr. May. Uh, your. Uh, your testimony is so noted. Anyone else? Hey, seeing none. And I will close the public hearing on CPA FY twenty twenty-two dash zero 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 four.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
May I uh, interject or ask a question of our city attorney?
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Waddams, I am on page. Four twenty-nine of this packet. Uh, red number four twenty-nine.
Yes, sir.
I'm looking at uh, toward the top, number eleven. Uh, language says an accessory dwelling unit, maybe four hundred square feet or up to fifty percent of the size of the principal dwelling unit. Uh, that that particular uh, phrase is interesting to me, so uh, it it would seem to me that the language there would suggest. Or uh, cut out those um, structures that aren't, aren't specifically for dwelling, so if I had a uh. I had a bakery here in Garden City that was ten thousand square feet. Um, the 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 principal purpose of that bakery is is not a dwelling. Um, and so, you know, because we, I think there's been some discussion about fifty percent of of ten thousand square feet is suddenly a five thousand square foot. Dwelling structure that could uh, overload our, our loading uh, formula. For a lot, and uh, as as my reading would be that we're only talking about. An ADU on a str- on a lot that is primarily a dwelling lot, is that correct?
Well, Mayor, Council President, that the, yeah, that. Point well taken, um, and when we had a staff meeting earlier today, I I was asking the question if this is just for dwelling units or if this is for commercial, commercial as well. Because dwelling unit to me, that's where you live, a dwelling unit is where somebody lives, so. Um, if the, I mean, if the council wants us to give us some guidance. Um, whether you wanted to apply it to both residential and non-residential, we will tweak that wording for the next time we're here. Um, but yeah, it certainly suggests, I mean, it says dwelling unit, that's where you live.
So, and under the, I guess, under the plane meeting of uh. You know, we, we entertained a scenario uh, moments ago. I think I brought up storage units, and that's oftentimes that we see uh, I'm onsite manager living at a storage unit. Uh, to me, the primary purpose of that is not a dwelling. It's a function of that business to provide governance, management, watchmanship. Uh, tho- those types of of things, uh, so I, I again think that um, the spirit of this. Is to focus on just exactly what Mr. May suggested, you know, a mother-in-law quarter, uh, aging parents. Um, maybe a disabled, a child, that adult child that lives at at home, but needs, it can be somewhat independent. Um. Temporary affordable housing perhaps, uh, but I see ADUs as being a. Specialized housing.
Well, Mayor and the Council President, uh, Paige, you you know, when I think of an accessory dwelling unit, I'm thinking about a secondary dwelling. I'm thinking about a guest house or a granny flat, I'm not really thinking about. Somebody living on a storage unit, but if that's what the council would like, we can do that, we'll just have to tweak the wording a little bit.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, but 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 we've been looking at. Dwelling unit accessory.
Right.
Yeah, all along.
Except accessory dwelling.
Yeah, I mean, the the lang- the language suggests, uh, we can find our remarks to um, to that, unless. We we change the heading and the uh, the intention of this uh, code change, and I I think that would address uh. Councilmember Jacobs' concerns about commercial properties and eighteen thousand square foot warehouses and so forth. Seems to me the language is plain.
Mr. Mayor and Council, if the council wants this to apply to both residential and non-residential, we will work with it.
I'm just thinking back over time, I remember a specific circumstance at a funeral home. That uh. We've got a dwelling unit. Not sure how we did that, Jenna, back in the day, that's been a long time ago. Um, required its own change. Um. So. Yes, uh, since we're doing the three reading processes, I'd like to think about that one a little more, if you would allow me to. Because I, I think there might be some application, limited applications to. Um. Non-residential property that. That we may want to allow this to apply to for the convenience. Uh, of a business owner perhaps, um. As I mentioned, could be a security thing, could be a uh, housing opportunity for. Uh, a key employee or a. Um, a position that. That unit could serve as part of a compensation package, I don't know, I'm I'm kind of rambling here, but. Like to think about that one just a little bit, if you'd allow me to, because that. Um, I've heard of interest in that from non-residential properties in the in the past, so. Do you have anything to add?
Um, Mayor, I'm here to stand for questions.
Okay. Okay, so I think from the administrative side, if we can. Have the first reading, I think we've got some direction on some things to uh, research a little further perhaps, and. Maybe deal with this. Residential versus non-residential, uh, Councilmember Page, that was a good catch, I don't know why I read right over that and it didn't register. So. For the matters before the council.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move for a first reading of ordinance number uh, ten thirty-three dash twenty-two by title only.
Second. A motion and a second. Um. We don't have an ordinance number, uh, but you're referring to the application number for the. For the ADU.
Mr. Mayor, he did reference the ordinance number.
Okay, ten thirty-three dash twenty-two.
Ten thirty-three.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just missed it, I'm sorry, my, my bad, okay. I've got a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none with Kurt Colerole.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes.
Ordinance ten thirty-three dash twenty-two and ordinance of the city of Garden City, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho. And many Garden City Code Title Eight Development Code, Chapter Two, Base Zoning District Regulations. Article C Land Use Provisions, Section fourteen, Dwelling Unit Accessory. Chapter seven references Article A Definitions, Section two Definition of Terms. By amending the language to include updated standards for accessory dwelling units, providing separability, repealing conflicting city code provisions. Approving a summary of the ordinance and providing an effective date.
Thank you, we'll move now to.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, just point of order.
Yes, yes.
Can we, uh, could I get a a motion to continue CPA FY twenty twenty-two dash zero 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 four? To a date certain, because that's what was noticed up for tonight. Um, and so if the council's not making a decision on that tonight, I requested that be continued to a date certain. And I would recommend that that date certain be whatever the third reading of this ordinance is going to be.
That would be the second Monday in February.
Correct, I I, just to keep the record clean if I'm.
Okay.
It would be the first meeting in February.
Yeah, I just said second Monday.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, first meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so we're asking for a motion to continue this.
The the C, yeah, the the number that was noticed up.
Okay. It says CPA FY twenty twenty-two dash zero 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 four, do a date certain of February.
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I saw move uh, for, for that date certain of um, February thirteenth, uh, continuance of. CPA FY twenty twenty-two dash zero 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 four.
Okay.
Second.
A motion and a second, we need discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hey, motion carries. Hey, now we'll move down to item G five, this is also a public hearing item, um. CPA FY twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 one, this is a code text amendment regarding sureties, Mr. Stoneborough.
Um, Mayor, thank you, and uh, thank you, members of the council as well. Um, just to start off, this uh, is ordinance number ten thirty, number twenty-two, or ten thirty twenty-two. Um, the intent of of this code amendment is to make uh, sureties or financial sureties easier to utilize. Um, currently, uh, the the surety regulation is specifically in the subdivision ordinance. Um, and a surety is just a financial guarantee that the improvements of the project will be made. So a project would be code compliant and complete, uh, should an applicant not follow through, the city would take. Uh, that financial guarantee, whether it's cash and trust, a bond, a letter of credit, and finish out those improvements. Um, and so this amendment would relocate uh, the surety. Um, enabling legislation from subdivisions to administration, uh, to ensure that they're easier to utilize. Or more clearly able to be utilized for any application. That could be somebody's single family home is built in the middle, finished in the middle of the winter, and there required landscaping isn't in. Yet, that would allow them to put a surety and put a surety in place and secure uh, their occupancy. With the city until springtime, summertime, when they could um, install their landscaping. Um, and the second part. Um, install their landscaping. Um, and the second part of of the surety. Um, is that it's very uh restricted. Um, I know that it does affect the Public Works Department. Um, pretty consistently, where the way that Garden City is developing, it's hard to install the drainage. Up front in in subdivisions, and so applicants are wanting to install the final drainage at the end of their project. So they don't have to redo it a number of times because they may uh ruin their drainage as they develop. Right now, that's specifically prohibited. So this would open up and allow for sureties uh to be utilized on anything that would be uh considered to to be safe. Um, so if there would be a life safety uh consideration, the surety still would not. Um, be able to be utilized, but in instances of drainages, a very specific instance that they could be opened up. And third, uh, what this would do is um give latitude to um identified staff members. The Public Works Director, the Development Services Director, to enter into these surety agreements. Provided that they're meeting certain council identified criteria. Um, should this ordinance move forward, there would be a resolution that would need to come. Through identifying who would have the authority and also the the protocols that would be utilized. Uh, we already have protocols in place, what to look for to make sure that a bond. Um, is is going to be a bond that we would allow, letter of credit, et cetera. Um, but that would be um adopted by resolution by the city council. And the last item. Um, is that this sets the surety to be at a hundred and twenty-five percent. Currently, it is at a hundred and twenty-five percent, but this would set it as a minimum. Uh, there are certain instances. Where we've seen just in the last year or two, where uh the the economy and the price of installing improvements. Is changing so rapidly that that one hundred and twenty-five percent may not be adequate uh to ensure that um. That surety would um be enough to cover the improvements. And so if. If we are in a situation like that again, it would get latitude to um the Public Works Director. Um, Development Services Director to say, we actually want a higher percentage uh to be maintained to um. Safeguard the city. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Okay, questions of Miss Thorneborough?
Um, Mr. Mayor, yes. Miss Thorneborough, on on the um, on the statement here, uh page four fifty in the packet. Um, item uh. Item D, you mentioned uh conditions determined by the city council. I assume you meant in the in in the large sense. If this is, if this is approved, um, this reads uh surety shall be at minimum amount. One hundred twenty-five percent of the total estimated cost of completing construction of the specific public improvements as estimated. I think it should read by a designated city official from quantities and cost data submitted by the developer. Does that satisfy the uh, the the conditions by which uh? A city official uh makes makes that decision? Am I, am I, am I being clear or?
Um, and Mayor, Councilmember Heller, it looks like uh you and the city attorney have the exact same thought on on that.
Okay.
On changing that word.
Well, I'm flattered uh by by that comparison, but so so who who does the determination? I I I assume it could be you or or someone in your uh or on your staff and so forth. But the 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 specific conditions then would be determined by your office and not a burden on the city council in terms of uh. Looking at those cost figures.
And Mayor, Councilmember Heller, that would be correct.
Okay, alright.
Um, currently, the current practice is to require either three bids or a signed contract to determine those those costs.
Thank you. Didn't want to slow us down, but I.
Thank you. Uh, one minor correction, I I think it is Mr. Waddams that is flattered. Okay, uh, further, further questions of staff?
And Mister Mayor.
Yes.
Can I just briefly go through my?
Certainly.
I'm gonna say about the same thing, but in different words, so I'm gonna be real short. My uh legal memorandum starts on page four thirty-eight. What this says and what this would be is a a complete repeal. Of our code on sureties and replace it with with what we're proposing. Currently, uh, so we once a surety, it has to go in front of council, council, and so we're trying to take it off the council's plate if you. We're asking that the council delegate the authority to staff. We talked about the the staff that would be looking at these things would be either Public Works, Colin Schmidt. Uh, for drainage or or Jenna for for the land, um, for the land application portion of it. Um. That's really about it as the actual ordinance. I did catch the exact same thing that Councilmember Heller just taught. Um, and we will get that fixed for the second reading. Um. And then Miss Thorburn and I, and we'll also have a recommendation on the second reading for this, but when it says uh. Minimum percentage may increase based on cost data and staff estimates. Um, I I don't know. I don't know if we have to narrow that scope or define that scope a little bit, but um I think it's good to go for the first reading.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Waddams. Further questions to staff?
Thank you, Mr. Thorneborough.
Thank you.
Hey, with that, I'll open the public hearing on CPA F Y twenty twenty-three dash zero. Zero. Zero one and. And see if we have anyone signed up to testify. We don't have anyone in the in the building here. I don't see any hands on our. Those that have joined us remotely. So uh, let the record reflect that there was no one interested in testifying at this time. So we will close the public hearing. And uh, council, uh, I'd ask you to consider an action on ordinance ten thirty dash twenty-two.
Mister Mayor.
Yes.
I move for a the first reading of CPA F Y twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 one by title only.
Second.
A motion and a second.
It's ordinance number ten thirty twenty-two.
I'm sorry. Uh, yes. Yes, thank you.
Don't do as I do. Okay.
This ordinance.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Is there a discussion on the motion? Hearing now the clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Ordinance ten thirty dash twenty-two, an ordinance of the city of Garden City, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho. Amending or repealing Garden City Code Title Eight Development Code, Chapter Five Land Division Requirements, Article B Subdivision Process, Section Seven. Guarantee of completion of improvements, repealing ordinance number eight nine eight dash oh eight in its entirety. Amending Title Eight Development Code, Chapter Five Land Division Regulations, Article A General Provisions and Standards. Section six Improvement Standards subsection C Construction of Improvements, repealing all ordinances or parts thereof. To the extent they conflict with this ordinance, providing all other ordinances included in the official code are still in effect, notwithstanding some provisions thereof being eliminated. Amending Title Eight Development Code, Chapter Six Administration, Article A General Provisions, adding Section fifteen. Financial surety, the language to include updated provisions for sureties, providing severability, severability, repealing conflicting city code provisions. Approving a summary of the ordinance and providing an effective date.
Mister Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, I move that we continue public hearing CPA F Y twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 one. For a date certain of February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you. Um, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Motion carries. We will now move to item B six. This is also a public hearing on CPA F Y twenty twenty-three. That zero 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 two. This is again a code text amendment uh regarding extensions, Miss Thorneborough.
Mayor, members of the council, uh, thank you. Um, this this uh code amendment's probably one that the council um. Can relate to and seeing the need for the change. Um, the the city's heard feedback from developers. As you can see at many of your meetings, uh, that the timeframes allotted by code are um difficult to meet. For many of the development projects. Um, this code amendment uh would. Um, increase the time um allotted for projects, both for building code as well as the development code. Um, and it would also, so the building code would allow for the administrator of the building code. Which in this instance is the Development Services Director um to allow for up to two extensions. Uh, before it would come to city council, and it would also allow for a hundred and eighty days um for a timeframe. The reason that that isn't any longer is so that there won't be a conflict with the Code of Federal Regulations regarding floodplain permits. Uh, which is limited to a hundred and eighty day timeframe. Um, with the building code, um, uh, the increase would be up to two a two-year. Uh, timeframe for subdivisions and for other applications, it would be a one-year um uh timeframe. Um, one thing to know is that uh, for whatever reason, the Garden City Code um has um. Time limitations and extensions in eight four F, which is specific to signage uh right now. Um, uh, there are provisions that are recommended uh to allow uh for. Um, the the Development Services Director to allow for extensions. Another way to deal with that. Staff suggests is just delete that provision in its entirety and default back to the one-year timeframe for the rest of the applications and development code. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Questions, uh, Miss Thorneborough?
Mister Mayor.
Yes.
I was talking to Charles, but I just wanted to refer to as well. So this would only be for new applications from. Approval forward, correct?
Um, Mayor, Councilmember, um, I I believe that it would be anything moving forward, but we'd have to, I. We'd have to look into how that would be applied, if it would be retroactive, or if it would be for applications that are approved. Post approval of.
No, that was my question. So if I applied yesterday, I still falling under the old code. Versus if I applied tomorrow, I'd be under the stew. Finally.
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Jacobs, typically, you're you're locked into whatever code that you apply under, but in the, this is. Applicable to all applications. I'm not quite sure that that would be the case, or if that could be applied. For example, if we have an extension request in right now that just hasn't come to council. Um, could staff then apply the staff level extension? And so I do defer to legal on that matter.
We could address it.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
Mister Mayor, I can tell, so the general rule is it's not retroactive unless the council says it's retroactive.
Right.
But the count, if the council wants it to be applied retroactively, you you just need to make that clear intent. We put it in writing and then it would be retroactive.
Thank you.
Hey, any other questions?
Mister Waddams, that's a good. Wouldn't the timeliness of a filing for an extension um? Be triggered by the date the extension was filed. I mean, many applicants never ask for an extension, right? And so it was kind of. Irrelevant whether they. Sort of were approved before this change or or after, right? It's it's it becomes relevant if they in fact apply for an extension. And and I I mean, am I reading that wrong?
Uh, Council President, I I think you're right, but but this uh total amendment is for two things. It's for the. Extensions and it's for the actual length of the permit.
Yeah.
So we're lengthening the length of the permit and the length of the.
That's the clarification I missed. Thank you.
Um, Mayor, just one other point to assist in in the hearing tonight. Um, I do want to note that the ordinance number is ten thirty-two twenty-two.
Thank you. I looked that up a minute ago. Okay, uh, the matter before us is a first reading on ordinance ten thirty-two dash twenty-two. Did I open the public hearing yet? Okay, let me open the public hearing on CPA F Y twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 two. Is there anyone interested in testifying on this code amendment? I see none. I'll close the public hearing on CPA F Y twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 two. And now council, the matter before you would be the first reading of ordinance ten thirty-two dash twenty-two.
Mister Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we. Have the first reading of proposed ordinance ten thirty-two dash twenty-two. Read into the record.
Second, got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing now the clerk call roll.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Ordinance ten thirty-two dash twenty-two, an ordinance of the city of Garden City, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho. Amending the following provisions, Title seven Building Regulations, Chapter one Purpose and Administration, Section five. Permit time limitations and expiration, Section seven Permit Reactivation, Title eight Development Code, Chapter two. Base zoning district regulations, Article C Land Use Provisions, Section thirty-three Recreational Vehicle Parking. Chapter four Design and Development Regulations, Article F Sign Provisions, Section four Permit Required. Chapter five Land Division Regulations, Article B Subdivision Process, Section six Permit Term of Permits. Chapter six Administration, Article A General Provisions, Section eight Exploration of Approvals. Article B Specific Provisions, Section two Conditional Use, by modifying the language for permit extension, extensions, providing severability. Repealing conflicting city code provisions, approving a summary of the ordinance and providing an effective date.
Thank you. That concludes the business on our agenda for this.
Continue. Do we need to make a motion to?
Oh, yes, we do. Yes, we do.
Mister Mayor. I move that we continue CPA F Y twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 two. To a date certain, public hearing to date certain of February thirteen.
Second, got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The motion carries. Now, that concludes the business on our agenda for this evening. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Okay, one quick, one quick question. Just a housekeeping matter. A couple council members, myself included. Um, had a really difficult time hearing uh some of the the presentations today. Um, it seems to be. Um, habitual that people aren't speaking into the mic, perhaps because they're looking at this as they're speaking. Uh, it would be an easy thing. Uh, might I ask if the council members are comfortable at this point with our pro COVID protocols? Could we possibly remove that barrier for better uh, for better listening purposes in the future?
Uh, let me look at that internally. Uh, I'll tell you, uh. Even with the barrier moved, we've had issues. Hearing, uh. Let's see what we can, let me find out what we can do about the mic.
Maybe it could be moved to the other corner.
Well, yeah, or a a much longer one so that it can get up.
It just.
Thank you for saying that. I thought it was just me. Yeah, just soft spoken and.
Enunciation wasn't clear.
Yes, um, okay, um. We'll address that issue.
Thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
No, no interruption. Um. Motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn then.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.